I'll order the meeting of the City of Columbiana City Council on this July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. I'd like to ask the end to give our indication and then we'll all rise and pledge you, say the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Bless those who hold office in the government of our city, help them to do their work in the spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice, and to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any call roll?
Here. Here. Here.
Liston?
Here.
Detillio?
Vienna? Here.
Noel?
Here. Here.
Hudson?
Here.
I just want to point out at this time that regardless of, irregardless of where we are on the agenda, at seven fifteen P M., we will have a public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-three tax budget. So make note of that. At this time, you've received in the mail the minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, and the special meeting of July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, they'll stand approved as submitted. We have this, I'm sorry, the reading of communications, a letter from Ashley Garver. Okay, I'm gonna read this real quickly. Hello, this is Ashley Garver on behalf of Clipper Football Association. The Boyd and I are requesting the date of August sixth to have a tag day at a few of our local Columbiana businesses. Please let me know as soon as possible if this date is acceptable. Thank you. Any comments on that letter?
There's one on the, under new business.
Okay, we'll, we'll deal with that under new business. Also, I'm moving to reports of commission and board. The, you have received a copy of the park board meeting minutes of June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Have any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none will accept those as submitted. And you also received a copy of the planning commission meeting minutes of July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any questions or comments regarding those minutes? Hearing none, the planning commission meeting minutes will be accepted as submitted. At this time in our agenda, under recognition of persons desiring to appear, for those that have a copy of the agenda, I'm gonna take the option here of moving item F under the manager's report, item nine, to this point in time of meeting. And that is, I'd like to ask if we could have a motion to concur with the city manager and police chief, William Myers, to appoint Alyssa Philion to the Columbiana Police Auxiliary.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on the motion? Do you have any call roll?
Yes.
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Very good. At this time, Mark Hudson will swear in. Alyssa?
I also believe.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I would support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The qualified ordinances of the City of Columbiana.
And their qualified ordinances of the City of Columbiana.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As an auxiliary police officer.
As an auxiliary police officer.
For which I have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
Very good. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Alyssa. Thanks for having, being on board with the city. I appreciate that. Also, under the recognition of persons desiring to appear, we have Jay Brothers wishes to discuss the dog park and the Firestone Park. Jay, would you like to come forward?
As it relates to the dog park fundraising, we had a pretty successful fundraiser coupled with a few strong donors. So that brings us fully funded, plus plus. We raised about a hundred and forty thousand dollars and the budget's about one thirty-two.
Fantastic.
All right. Yeah, that's unbelievable.
Fantastic.
You did a good job. The construction sequence going forward is the installation of water. We got fence and we got A B A parking. The fence in this sequence is the wild card. So I'm hesitant to give a date on opening. Mr. McPain, I've had that discussion. That's related to COVID and supply chain issues. And that's all I really got. If you have any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Not at all, really on my end of the world.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the construction of the dog park.
It's motion?
Second.
And the second. Okay, a motion to approve it. So just so I get the correct, so you're waiting for, it sounds like you're still waiting for.
Sounds right.
So basically, but okay.
Jay, is that a four-foot fence or is it five?
Four foot.
Okay.
It's an agricultural style fence. Well, we thought that would fit with the sun back there versus changing.
Sure.
So that's what we want.
Has the, has the fence been paid for already?
As much.
I'm just curious if with this, with the delays, if they could increase the price on us.
No, we locked in the price.
Good.
So basically, your opening will be based on when you can get that fence installed.
Well, there's gonna be some touch up of the grassing as well.
Yeah.
So that's gotta be established.
Okay.
That's what.
Okay, and you don't have any rough ideas, so.
I want, I would like to see the rainfall.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion? The end, we call roll.
Yes.
McBain?
First, I'd like to say that I fully support this project, but because of my involvement, that I think I need to not vote on this one. I'm staying.
I understand.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Jay.
That is, thank you very much. We have on the agenda at this point Tucker Coke Junior to discuss, discuss options for the intersection of Parkview and Main Street. You gentlemen, gonna speak. Want to state your name for the record?
My name is Nick Shu. I'm working with C. Tucker Coke and Engineering Director here in Columbiana. We just moved into this building beginning of April and on the southeast corner there heading northbound on Route Forty-six, there's a telephone pole that if, and almost any vehicle is parked at the stop sign currently. Oncoming northbound traffic tries to turn right, they're either gonna go through the telephone pole or into the car stop at the stop sign. We've seen multiple times a day cars at stop sign, they have to put it in reverse into our parking lot or somewhere else to avoid or turning right into there. It's either the pole or the car. It's also hazardous with any accessibility to ambulances, fire trucks, U P S trucks even, just trying to swing in there. There's just not enough turn radius to adequately get a car around. Where we have a couple suggestions or ideas. One is turning into a one-way street. The other is to relocate that electrical pole. Kinda get it back off that intersection so it's not a hazard anymore for any driver on the road, whether you're turning right off Parkview or turning right, even if you're making left heading southbound into town. Even that left turn to make it, you're swinging very close to the pole if not. So it's just in a very tight corner right there. So looking for a couple options. We ran auto cover, you have the ability at the office to run trucking traffic simulators. And with those simulators, we kind of demonstrated that especially a larger pickup truck even has to swing either indoor parking lot or they're not clearing. We have diagrams showing it going right into the center of the pole or actually inside the pole almost. So center of the vehicle's through. But that's kind of what we're looking at as far as that. We have some options going forward, but we also have the diagrams to show how the traffic routing for small vehicles, U P S, semis, fire trucks, ambulances, any of those. What we're looking at.
Chief, have you seen any reports on, on this coming from anybody?
As far as.
As far as accidents?
Like accidents?
Yeah, anything like that there?
Few years.
I guess my question is, why would there be a need for a semi to pull back in there?
That was one of the, semis would be a E V S, but I think there were some, when we were redoing the building, any trucks with any trailers coming through is maybe not exactly a semi, but any pickup truck carrying a trailer even, that just radius is very tight. The truck might be able to get through if they come into our parking lot, but that trailer's still gonna hit the pole, so.
Yeah, I'm not trying to play the devil's advocate here, but like even with a truck with a trailer, what would be the purpose for it to be back in there? You're an engineering site and a development type business and more of an office area, and why would there be a need? And I'm just asking the question.
Oh, and then there's a lot of traffic that does, not a lot, but there's traffic that does come back to get into that residential or head down to the church right there behind our office. It's not solely for our office in general. I just see dark over engineering direct once it moved back, but there's traffic that does turn on there and area else. And we have the parking lot right there. So with that parking lot being there, any cars that swing wide could hit one of our employees parking as well. I said it's not to say it's semi wood, but it's for some reason, I don't know why I wouldn't use another side street, but I have seen trailers come through there. They wanna try to make the tight turn, but it is residential behind us. So I have seen like landscapers and that come through there every now and then. So that'd be kind of the example of why semi or truck or trailer come through. Or like lawnscape.
Yeah, I, I live on Parkview and I once had a delivery that was made by a semi trailer when my dome for the telescope arrived that was brought down by a semi trailer. I have a boat that goes out of there all the time too. So I mean, you know, trailers are, there's definitely trailers in the, in the neighborhood. So, but I've never observed any real problem making the turns and everything there. So I'm not real sure what the concern is. I didn't take the time to stop and look at it.
Like I said, it's like during the day, you're there and you see it a little bit more, especially though you guys are past the office, we have all those windows now. So we speak quite a bit. And to be honest, it is twenty-five miles an hour. Speeding's not like a major thing. So it's not like people are flying up and down either side of the street and at twenty-five that it's, you can't stop, but I have seen cars put in reverse, just taking a walk at lunch. So I'm just looking at that. It's, we've seen it a couple times. Cars pulling in, swinging real close to our employees. So bring it up.
I would say to the order at seven fifteen P M.
Okay.
We need to hold a public hearing at this time. So if you don't mind having a seat and then we'll bring that issue back up after we have a public hearing. So at this time, we are required to have a public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-three tax budget. Mike, do you have any introductory comments you wanna make?
This is something we do every year. It's required.
So this is a requirement. And is there anybody here that would like to speak to the twenty twenty-three budget? Hearing no comments. I will now declare that the public hearing for the twenty twenty-three tax budget is now we will move on with our agenda. And do you wanna come back up at this point? Any other? I was cutting some comment off there.
Yeah, just one other comment. Sixty years ago or so, that was a one-way street between Fairfield Avenue and Main Street. I don't know when or why it was changed to two lanes.
Which direction was it? Do you remember? Now we're really.
I think, I, I think it was one-way headed east. So you know, you could turn in off of Main Street and move it. The only reason I think that was my aunt was a secretary Joshua Dixon at that time. And she used to, and she lived down on down in that area, but she used to come and she would drive it the wrong way every time she.
Well, she was only going one way.
Have the comments? How does the council wish to consider this matter further?
Well, I don't, I don't think we're in a position tonight to discuss it any further. We'd like to take it under advisement and give it some thought. Sure.
And anything you guys would need, like I said, we have the cab, we ran the traffic simulators on that for, we could put any vehicle basically that's pretty much known to man on our simulator to show how it would affect anything. We did a survey on it. So we have the data points saying, so anything you guys would need to kind of evaluate or look into it more, we're happy to provide at any time.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I think Lance in our street department ought to take a look at it and give this a recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we have Nicole Ice here to discuss the upcoming cultural collective concert event to be held at Main Street Theater on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. There's Nicole.
Here I am.
There you are.
All right. So I'm gonna give you all this just so you can follow along at home. I'm also gonna review just, cause it's so exciting that we have this theater actually doing stuff now. I thought I'd just tell you guys everything that's gonna happen this year. We're running out of this year.
Thank you.
There you are. Okay, so really quick, we have actual live shows, plays that are happening, which is really exciting. There's four for the rest of this year. So there's a, Squidward Theater Company, The Wizard of Oz, One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, Squidward Theater Company, and then a Christmas Story the Musical, Squidward Theater Company. And then It's a Wonderful Life, the radio play is Indigo Family Theater. We're starting to get more theater groups that are wanting to do things there. So the purpose of it is actually working out really well. And right now for the next three weeks, there are summer boredom matinees every Wednesday at one o'clock for the next three weeks. I think the next one's like Easy Rider or something like that. Sure, it's really exciting. So the other event that is coming up is live music. We're having a full-blown concert. And it is locals, the Conkle Brothers and Moot Guru and Amless. And we are actually putting up seats on the stage. It's gonna be insane. It's gonna be awesome. It's gonna be really cool. Like, we're really excited about it. The tickets went on sale last week and thought you guys would be really into it. Maybe you should come. I don't know. Tickets are on sale. And then by personal request by Quentin Tarantino himself, we are having a Tarantino Film Festival. And that's gonna be this October sixth, seventh, and eighth for showing Pulp Fiction, Django Unchained, and Reservoir Dogs, because it is the Reservoir Dogs thirtieth anniversary, which is insane. It's been thirty years. And we actually might have a couple of B-list celebrities that were in some of those movies come in. I'm working on that right now. Depends how sweet I can be to people. And I know that a lot of you don't know that, the, how Quentin Tarantino personally asked me to go to the film festival, but.
Yeah, we wanna know that.
No, I don't think you do here.
Right place, right time. I was very sweaty. So I don't know if all of council has seen this yet, but I did in my conversation with Quentin Tarantino, I asked him if he could give me something to hang in the theater. And he said, of course, Nicole, spell Columbiana. So to the audience at Columbiana, Ohio, we got it framed. Yeah. So I decided to share with you guys what's going on and hopefully you guys can make some of the shit shows. Any questions?
I have one. Are, are you gonna do a Dora event for that?
So for, for the Quentin Tarantino thing, we will. I'd rather have more information, but we don't need it for the we don't need a Dora for the concert.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just gonna be contained.
Okay.
Contained excitement. Let's see what.
Well, it's great to see these movies or plays back at the theater.
Yeah, it's great.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
Very good.
And also, just in case some of you don't know, nonprofit groups can actually volunteer towards the concession stand for these events and they get to keep a percentage of the concession. So.
Very good.
Right.
Well, thank you very much for bringing us up to speed.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. Kenny, would you like to make any comments tonight or are you here as a visitor? Do you have something you'd like to say to the council?
I got another thing to bring up. I didn't know if I had to go to the park or you guys, that they brought up to me that about, you know, what the old Eagle Ford was, the bleachers. And also they said the parking lot, I know, I realize we put five point five million dollars into it, but they said it'd be nice to have them two things done. They're getting old, that bleachers getting old and it's crumpled up and people say, and then I, and then parking lot, they was talking about that too. So they always bring it up to me, cause they figured I, I can get the ball rolling.
There you go.
Then Brian was going to be, he had another commitment. So what we get talking about, the mayor, and he, he said he talked to the police. And my project was doing a, a, a Christmas for, for kids and that, that go beyond that, not just, not just gifts. If, if food, clothes, whatever they need, what they think they need. Go a little bit further and hopefully get the newspaper or some of the reports and the, and, and the T V got, and I can make it a big thing for the city and other, other towns that wanna do it. That, I knew I, I was young, I didn't have anything. And when somebody gave me something, I appreciate it. Need more than get toys anymore. With that, that was virus and all this, kids need more, they don't know what they're gonna get the meal sometimes. That's, that's more than just that. I wanna make it bigger than what the project is right now at the police department. That's my idea.
Well, Kenny, I think we can get together and talk about your idea. Maybe we get something set up here pretty quickly and.
Yeah, like I said, Brian was going to be here, but he had, he, he had done another commitment, I guess, contested me. So that's why, that's my good thing. I tell you what, when we, we do this project, we get to reach more than that, and both, and see when we can do this project and where we can put all the stuff, we need the stuff and all this. It's gonna involve the whole city, so.
Good.
That's why, that's why I wanna get more info to, maybe other cities towns wanna do it.
Good. Very good, Kenny.
Very good. Thanks.
Very good. Um. Okay, uh. We have, next on the agenda, we have the manager's report. I'll turn to Lance for that.
Thanks, Mayor. We're contacted by AMP today, our electrical supplier. And we're gonna do energy savings days for the rest of the week, actually for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Or, yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we're gonna do it from four to six P M. The eastern coast is going to get hit pretty hard with some heat, like Philadelphia, we're looking at ninety-seven this week. So that's gonna be probably setting some peaks on that. And we're gonna try to lower our footprint. The good, the good news for us is it's not gonna be ninety-five. It's gonna be eighty-five and eighty-seven. So, and we're only gonna have to do it for two hours. But if we can, you know, get off the grid as much as we can over the next three days, we, we think that we may set, you know, some of those for the next three days, because, you know, New York and, and Philadelphia are both getting hit hard with the heat. They're actually getting hit on the weekend too, but our industries are typically not open on the weekends. So it wouldn't benefit us, at least at this point, to have the energy savings day. So we just put a press release out today about, I don't know, about three o'clock to let everybody know that that's, that's what's happening. And, you know, you might think, well, it's not that hot out. Well, it's, you know, the, the rest of the grid is, it's gonna be very hot. It'll, it'll definitely make the news how hot it's gonna be. So so we're, we're gonna do that. We've, we've only did one so far this year, and we think that that might have been the, the peak for the year, but this, this may be peak number two, three, and four, maybe. Okay, so let's see. Been talking about the pole heater forever. We did get it installed and there was a defective pump from the factory and there's some type of recall on something that's not related to the, the actual pole heater itself. So it's gonna be any day that we're, that we're gonna fire that up. So let's see, oh, doc paving project, we're gonna continue to put those. It's, it's pretty much done for now. The paving project that's going out, East Park Avenue, Springfield Road, Heck Road. The big news on that project is we did come in under budget and is right now, we think we're gonna get be able to put new sidewalks in down East Park on the north side from the square all the way down to the pool hill. on the north side from the square, all the way down to the pool hill. Bottom of the pool hill. And then on the south side of East Park, all the way to uh the cemetery. We'll be able to, we'll be able to get that underneath the, that, that grant uh because of the um great opportunity we have. So uh, we, we appreciate their flexibility and, and uh that probably will not start until um till August, but it may be before the next council meeting, so I wanted to kind of give you a warning that, that's supposed to happen, so. We really appreciate ODOT working with us and kind of uh shifting gears on the fly to do that. We did look for other areas to do it, but um Springfield Road was one of them. But we could not uh meet all the easements and everything is as easy as this one. You know, that there was already sidewalks there and there, but I, I think it'll really make uh that, that part of town look really nice though. Brighten up. Uh, let's see, aggregation. Uh, we're getting all kinds of calls on that. Uh, we believe we're gonna make uh some moves in early August, and we will give you an update on that. So we're meeting next week, all the way through, meet once a week, all the way through uh August. But I believe we'll have something tied up by August uh sixteenth, which is our next meeting. And that idea is, which we've always said, is we're gonna try to get a fixed rate. You know, the, the best we can get for starting in the fall before the winter hits. Uh, let's see, that uh Moxie Events that was here, they did call us today, they're gonna be at the August sixteenth meeting. And it sounds like they're going to um do their I think it's uh, I think they're gonna do first Friday in, in uh October. They're working with Danny uh from the chamber on that. Progress Committee's been working on a survey. Uh, it's gonna be circulating soon. We'll try to get that out to you and have people fill that out. We, we appreciate it. It's not very time consuming, just trying to figure out what direction the Progress Committee needs to go next. Uh, Chalk on Main uh went, went very well. No issues were reported. It's uh I think uh Nicole's left, but uh the Uncle Sam hat got two hundred and thirty thousand views on, on uh, on the Facebook page of uh, of the Chalking Dad's website, so that was pretty cool. Safety Forces reported that fireworks went well. Uh, thank you uh Chief, and thanks to uh all the departments and everybody that kicked in and, and the park. You know, all the departments, uh EMS and Fire. We um made it through, and uh we appreciate everything that you did. Uh, let's see, we opened up the tree trimming bins, and they're on the, the uh agenda tonight. Uh, school reached out to us recently about an SRO, and we were able to um get one lined up, and, and hopefully they're gonna be asked tonight on, on uh the agenda to uh put an SRO on, uh, out at the school. And what that does for us is, you know, it provides us with a little bit more flexibility, as we will need to uh hire a new officer to do that, so. It may be within, but you know, for most of the year, they're out there, but uh we can use them, you know, in off hours and in the summer, so. It's a, it's a nice thing. We are holding a patrolman test next month uh to replace the expiring list that expires at the end of this one. Uh, street department uh just updated on the sidewalk. We did pick up brush. Uh, we're gonna be doing uh town cleanup here soon. It's um on our um it's on our website there. See, uh, we're installing new street signs throughout town. Uh, Northwest and Middle Street uh projects uh gonna put, uh, we've already put the first course down on Northwest. Yeah, we're gonna do uh Middle Street, and then we'll come back and do both of them at the same time, uh final, final coat. Uh, Water Department, we've been doing server upgrades on the SCADA. And we service three generators. Uh, wastewater department, we're getting to, to a place where we're uh producing too many bio solids, which will go over our uh contract or fifty thousand dollar limit. So we are working on bid specs, and we'll probably ask you to uh go out the bid next month uh for that, and we'll sign a contract with somebody to do that for us. Uh, Park and Cemetery, um, we are gonna be uh working on a, getting a part-time secretary out there. Uh, we'll be mostly year-round, but just uh not the full day. Let's see, Electric Department hooked up some temporary commercial to temps on the residential side and uh received a few major deliveries that we had ordered back in the fall, so. Uh, the uh lead, I've been giving you updates on the lead times for, for uh building equipment for um not only Electric Department, but the Water Department and uh my first number I gave you, I think, was fifty-two, fifty-four weeks, and now it's up to sixty-eight for that same, same equipment. So we're trying to order uh, and we're, we're looking everywhere for vendors for, for some of the for some of the equipment, and uh there's been a couple vendors that say that they're not taking any orders until uh January twenty twenty-three. They just stopped the ordering process, so. We, we're trying to tell people that it, uh, the planning commission, right? Anybody that's wanting to do a new build. You know, we're, we're getting to the point uh that it's, it's getting very difficult. Now, we do have stuff that's, you know, we keep stuff uh in stock, and we do try to order, but um it's affecting us everywhere. I believe that, just to put it in perspective, I, Chief, when did we, um, when did we order that ammunition that we just received? I think it was end of twenty twenty.
Like November or twenty twenty.
We just, so we replaced an ammunition order in twenty, November twenty twenty, and we just got the ammunition just now, so. So we're gonna have to start loading our own, so. That's all I have.
Everybody gets one bullet.
You're doing a Barney fight.
There's no guarantee what caliber you're getting. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
It's funny how time changes, and we wouldn't even, a couple years ago, we wouldn't even thought about things like supply chain.
Yeah.
You know, it wouldn't have been even a thought that we would have, but it's something we have to deal with, so. Thank you for the report. To me, it's a little bit humorous. People complain about their street getting fixed, like your streets getting fixed. Uh, did you get, did you hear what you just said to me? It is gonna take a while. It's not magic. Somebody doesn't go out there and say, abracadabra, that's, your street is now totally redone. It does take work and time, but yeah, I know we have a lot of projects going on in town, and we're really proud of all those projects, I think.
Yeah.
We're glad that we've got the funds and the resources to make that happen, so it's all good. Any uh questions for Lance? Okay, um, in your packet, you have the mayor's court report of June twenty twenty-two. Questions on that report? You also have the EMS report of June of twenty twenty-two. Questions, comments on that report? And you have the building zoning report of June of twenty twenty-two. Uh, do you have any questions on that report? Hearing none, all those, um, we do get some bid results for tree terming and tree stump tree stump, or grinding and removal, which we have those in there to be dealt with later in the agenda. Any questions on those? Okay. Uh, you also have received, received two bill lists, one of seven, five twenty-two, and one of seven, nineteen twenty-two. Any questions or comments on those bill lists? Hearing none, gonna move to uh old business, and the first thing I would like to ask with regard to both old business and new business, I'm seeking a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. DM, you call the roll?
Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, old business resolution number twenty-two dash R dash six zero one. This is second reading, a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase certain real property upon which a city-owned lift station is now located.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any questions on the motion? DM, you call the roll?
Listen.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
McBane.
Yes.
Item twelve, new business. My, a motion to approve the request from Ashley Garver on behalf of the Little, Little Clipper Football Association to hold a tag day on August sixth, twenty twenty-two in the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? DM, you call the roll?
Banner.
Yes.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
McBane.
Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Uh, I would like to seek a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three tax budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments on that motion? Hearing none, DM, we call the roll?
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
McBane.
Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
I would like to seek a motion to consider the following ordinances as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. DM, you call the roll?
Souter.
Yes.
McBane.
Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three one three two, emergency. Ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of county line road drive by constructing sanitary stewers sewers together with manholes and service connections, therefore, and the necessary apparatuses thereto, and by installing and replacing paving as necessary and declaring an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Questions? DM, you call the roll?
Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
I would like to request a motion to consider the following resolution as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. DM, you call the roll?
We've also got six oh four as an emergency.
Pardon?
You didn't actually read the, you said to read it as an emergency, but you didn't read the ordinance, so you read any ordinance or a question to read it as an emergency?
It's a motion to consider the following resolution as an emergency. Why don't we do the next, why don't we do the next two?
If someone, if someone.
Do you have to have two, do you have to have two for that? Do you have to have two for that?
Two what?
Yeah, we're.
Well, one, one, well, six oh three and six oh four, both emergencies.
Yeah, if somebody didn't want one of them. Okay, okay, gotcha.
Because of the nature of it.
All right.
Dick kinda recommended, and I think that's good recommend.
Okay.
All right, uh, this is to read six oh three as an emergency. Listen.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
McBane.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two dash R dash six zero three, emergency, an emergency resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing tax levy in excess of the ten mil limitation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code five seven zero five point one nine.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Listen.
Yes.
Like to seek a motion to consider the following resolution as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two dash R dash six zero four, emergency. An emergency resolution, amending resolution number twenty-one dash R dash five seven eight authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding and to accept monies from the Columbian Exempt Village School District to be used exclusively for wages and related benefits to permit the City of Columbiana Police Department to assign a school resource officer, SRO, at the district schools.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. DM, you call the roll?
Yes.
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 Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three one three three, first reading. And ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Mike's Tree and Landscape LLC eight hundred West Baton Drive, Alliance, Ohio four four six oh one for the furnishing of tree pruning for the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
You call the roll, Dan?
McBane.
Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
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 Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three one three four, first reading. And ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Mike's Tree and Landscape LLC eight hundred ways, West Baton Street, Alliance, Ohio four four six oh one, for the furnishing of tree removal and stump grinding for the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
DM, call the roll?
Listen.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, before I move to the next item, uh, will there be any business conducted after this executive session?
There's a possibility, but I'm not sure. Don't know. I think you could do council comments and.
Go ahead and take care of that.
I think so.
Okay, uh, for the sake of everybody out there's time, um since we do not know if we will have any actions to be taken after the executive session. I'd like to take this opportunity to see if anyone out there or on uh Or on the, I'm on the electronic connection. Have anything that they would like to say at this time uh, at the council meeting? Sorry, public comments anybody would like to make?
I do.
Do you want to come forward, sir? State your name.
Edward Susani. One time I knew most of the members I knew. But I received the letter that said to be here at a meeting, invited to a meeting at seven fifteen regarding. The property across from ten twenty-four East Park Avenue. Where they want to do twelve plus acres. Over here is their address is nine forty-seven East Park from R one. Residential low density and R two medium density. R two B U D, land unit development. Apparently zoning. Is already passed and it's up to you folks to give a final approval. My first question is uh. How does that change the total density? You know, the other thing is. Most of that golf course. Has been underwater. Time and again. Now, if they're going to build on it. I don't know where the water is going to go, hundred and across the street. Now, the road is higher, probably six or seven inches than it used to be. Maybe even more than that. Back to prior service director, Don Schaefer said that he saw water over there. I never have. But I've seen a golf course flooded. And then the other thing is uh, traffic. Does there have been any thought? The East Park Avenue where it goes on to fourteen. So at least making turning lanes out there, widen the thing out. So that you have a left turn lane and a right turn lane. Cause you're exiting. Because that's a disaster. The policeman is still here. I'm sure he can attest to it in the mornings and the afternoons. It's not good. You can make the corner with a semi though.
It's always good to know.
But that is a problem. And however many more, I don't know what the density is going to be. More people want to go out there. It's a hundred back there. That's what is, in today's world, that's a hundred and fifty, two hundred cars. Just more fun. I'm going to guess council, not council planning. May or may not have. With the traffic. But I doubt if they looked at the flooding situation because if they did. I don't know what they turned into. The pond maybe. That's all. I do.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Ed McNei, I live on Parkview down at the end. And uh, we're having a lot of trouble with the water from the park now. Coming into the back of the houses. My neighbor, he's on vacation, but his garage is flooded three times this year.
Okay, wait. Could you just clarify what, what, say that again, where you are?
Parkview Drive.
Parkview?
Down at the end.
Okay. Okay, all right.
But my property where I just built the new house is, we've got all the water coming off of the park. And there's, you've got a ditch in there, but it's all plugged up and. The water's coming over and you can see the road now is flowed clear apart now. It's into the dirt. The blacktop is coming out because the water runs over and then the cars just keep beating it, beating it and. You know, the road, you're, you're going to have to replace the whole piece of the road there soon. But the big thing is cleaning that ditch out in the back. From the park because you're doing so much work there now and you've got so much flat land. You know, the stormwater, do you have a stormwater prevention plan there?
I've been complaining about it for years.
Shouldn't we do something about it?
Absolutely.
I mean, the ditch, you know, my neighbor has been three times this year so far that. His garage has been two feet of water in it. And we videoed the water comes out of the park. It comes out of there ten inches deep. All the way through there. Then you have two ponds that are in the back there that are leaking. When, you know, we get a lot of rain, the water is coming out underneath. And then going down, but the pipe is only about. That big around and it just can't handle all the water that's coming now from the park. Is that where you're putting the dog uh, park in there too, back there?
Dog park's going in on the walking trails back in that area, yeah.
Yeah, so that's even going to add more. Flatland, so when it rains, we're going to get even more water.
Well, you may or may not, uh, it's. You know, right now, it's going to, it's going to be grassed and all that sort of stuff, so that, that'll help to absorb some of the water. But I don't think it's going to cause any more water to run off than what runs off of it now.
Yeah, because we get an inch of rain, his garage goes underwater.
Yeah. Mine doesn't go underwater, but I have a moat all the way around the house.
But the big thing, you gotta do something with the road here because it's down to the, you know, the blacktop's coming up clear to the dirt now. So.
Comment?
Yeah, I mean.
Should be done with that ditch. Cleaned out.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we've got it on, on this year's schedule to clean it out. I, I actually thought we were starting to clean it out that we. There was some work done on it uh, last week, a little bit. Yeah, just right at, right at the end, close to the uh, walking trails. Uh, but wasn't a whole lot of work done. Just, they did open up the, the drain that's sitting there. I didn't see that. And that has been covered with mud and everything for a long time. I didn't even know there was a drain there.
Okay, but I just thought that and then with the road, you know, they could even sweep it, get the rocks off of it.
Yeah, there's, it's, it's coming apart right now.
Yeah, it's getting pretty bad.
Yeah, we walk the dogs down through there all the time and it's, looks pretty bad.
It's sinking because now it's laying full of water in there.
Yeah, to answer your question, we do have a stormwater protection plan. I mean, that's, that's why the parking lot is the way it is. You know, it's a green parking lot, basically. There's swales in it and there's retention in there and then. And then the, the ponds themselves, uh. Yeah, you know, you're saying it's leaking, but, but it's designed, I think the, there's a. Sideward depth on that, okay? And there's only a little tiny outlet. And that is to, so the water comes up and then slowly goes out. So those are retention um, attempts. But um, we, we do need to clean that ditch out and we've talked about. You know, it's, 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 it's on our list.
Well, the big thing is to save the road. You know, otherwise you're going to have to dig that all out and re-black top it. You can see it right now. It won't make it through the winter.
Yeah.
With the potholes that are there.
Yeah, it's crumbling.
Yeah. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for. Being so respectful to the council and your comments and we appreciate you. Okay. Presenting that to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Susani, you're going to be getting another letter that looks much like the one that you just had.
Different date.
Different date. Okay, so you noticed we did not have that public hearing today. We, we started that process over. So um, we haven't set that date, but you'll be getting that identical letter.
I wonder if you could bring out the attention that plays like that.
Yeah, they.
I know old Nick from the mixed tin shop. He's been flooded out in the past.
They are going to put um. Two, at least two stormwater retentions there. We gave them our uh, stormwater regs. And uh, the good news for that street is we just got funded to get the uh, water off the top of the hill. So we're going to fix the stormwater Beverly and Ray. And then all that water that's coming down there, we're going to put it into a uh, EQ basin back by the railroad. Might be three years, but we're going to do it. That's, that's the same water. Yeah, the water comes right down that hill. Right behind, yeah.
Any other comments? I'd just like to say that I do, I want to thank both of you for being so respectful in your presentations and. I'm sure the council and the city will, you know, consider your words and uh. Will do what we can to uh, deal with the issue. That's our desire. So thank you very much. Uh, any other comments? Hearing a lot of comments. Do I have a motion to go into executive sessions and discuss personnel matters, section one twenty-one point two-two? G one, and I forgot the council comments, I'm sorry. I did forget the council comments. Any councilmen? Like to make any comments?
I'd just like to say that there's a new stop sign. There's a new stop sign where heck and spawn cellar come together on the other side of fourteen. There's never, well, I guess, uh, one time there was.
Yeah.
But there hasn't been a stop sign there for quite a while. And there's now a stop sign where heck comes in there too. So spawn cellar. And heck road coming in have to stop for traffic coming on fourteen. That's, just be aware that that's there and that's.
Very good. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, and I apologize for advancing the agenda before I should have, but now I will seek a motion to. Uh, move to executive session for the purpose of discussion of personal matters, section one twenty-one point twenty-two G one.
So moved.
Second.
Second. DM, we call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
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 McBane?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Like to move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
There's motion second, DM, you call the roll?
Becker?
Yes. Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
You know, motion to a charm?
So move.
I need signatures.